Board, I would take a motion to adopt the agenda for December 5th, 2024.
I move to adopt the agenda as recommended.
Second.
Motion by Will Babbitt, second by Robert Kuhn.
Mrs. Reagan? Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Thank you. Recognitions and awards. Take it away, Becky.
Good evening, everyone. Well, as you can see, we have a packed house tonight, so lots to celebrate, and we can dive right in. To start off, we are proud to recognize the Olathe Public Schools Foundation as an outstanding community partner, so I would like to invite Executive Director of the Foundation Cindy Von Velt to the front, along with Brant Dorfler, Angie Powers, Kathy McDonald, Foundation Board President Nathan Turner, Hannah Greer, Erin Vader, Jody Farr, Stacy Yurkovich, Maureen Hurd, Alice Snyder, and Director of Community Development, Heather Schoonover. The mission of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation is to connect financial and volunteer resources to enhance excellence in the Olathe Public Schools. The Foundation works hand-in-hand with district staff and has a board of directors that includes 24 community members who volunteer their time, talents, and resources to serve Olathe education. Nearly $7 million were invested in district programs over the last six years. From programs including the Wimmer Student Care Fund, Dr. Bee's Musical Instrument Fund, the Avid Lifetime Learners Fund, the Student Health Emergency Fund, and the School Supply Program, the Foundation is a key partner to provide financial assistance for those in need. In addition, the Foundation has raised funds to support state-of-the-art equipment, software, tools, program fees, and scholarships for students in the district's career pathways. They are committed to supporting student mental health and wellness through the Braden Robertson Student Mental Health Fund, and have also provided scholarship funding for Olathe Special Education paras to pursue master's degrees in special education. Providing funding to classroom teachers remains the cornerstone of the Foundation's support through classroom grants, along with their partnership Donors Choose, a national nonprofit crowdfunding platform for educators. And finally, the Olathe Public Schools Foundation also has a robust student scholarship program and recognitions for our outstanding staff members. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation for their consistent financial and volunteer dedication to Olathe Public Schools. We would be remiss if we did not take this opportunity to extend a special thank you to the Foundation's Senior Development Specialist Katie Bowden. Katie was unable to join us tonight, but we wanted to publicly thank her for her service to the Foundation. As starting next semester, she will be taking on a new role to support her husband's business and spend time with her two beautiful sons. We wish her all the best in this next chapter and want to thank her for the countless relationships she's helped develop during her time here and the funds she's helped raise. Speaking of funds raised, tonight, the Foundation Board and staff are present to show the amazing financial commitment to the district over the past 12 months with support for more than $1.3 million. Yeah. Thank you, guys. So earlier this year, the Ravens snagged the 6A Girls Tennis State Championship title. What is incredible about this achievement is they are the first-ever championship team in either boys' or girls' tennis in district history. The girls' tennis title has been held by one of two schools since 2002, but this year, the Northwest Ravens ended that streak. In addition to winning the team championship, Matilda Dick. Awesome job, ladies. Continuing on with our fall sports, I would now like to invite up our Olathe West Girls' Cross Country Team, along with our individual cross-country champion in the boys category, Braxton Thiel, Principal Jay Novacek, and Coach Kelsey Carvajal. So like their peers at Northwest, the Olathe West Girls Cross Country Team also made history this year by winning their fifth consecutive state title. That is five straight state championships. This is the first time a girls' cross-country "five-peat" has occurred in Kansas history. Olathe West also had an individual cross-country champion. Braxton Thiel won the individual title, finishing 16 seconds ahead of the second-place finisher, who also just happens to be an Olathe student, Dylan Plath of Olathe South. We are so proud of these individuals for their historic win. Thank you. Congratulations. And parents, don't be shy. Come on up. One more, Mr. Humphrey? Awesome. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. And last, but not least, I'd like to invite Fairview and Washington Elementary School psychologist Tyler Kitson up to the front, along with Fairview Principal Andrew Dimmet. This fall, Tyler was honored as the Kansas School Psychologist of the Year by the Kansas Association of School Psychologists. This award is meant to highlight the state's most outstanding practitioner, and we must say, we have to agree that they have found that in Tyler. Following in his mother's footsteps, Tyler pursued a career in school psychology. This is Kitson's 10th year in the district, and he shares that the most rewarding part of his work is the interactions with his students. Tyler has been an integral part of leading mental health work within the district, but also on the state and national levels. We are so proud to have him represent Olathe Public Schools with this award. Please join me in giving Tyler a round of applause. All right. Thank you. That concludes our awards for tonight.
G H, and was the officer in charge of the 2024 audit this year. I'll briefly go through our letters that we issued and then answer any questions that you may have. Starting off in the financial statements, pages 1 through 3 are the auditor's report. The auditor's report includes standards that we use for the audit, and usually what everyone's most interested in hearing is what opinion did we issue on the financial statements. The opinion can be found in the first section on that first page, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest and best opinion an entity can receive and that we're able to issue as auditors. And I feel like that speaks very highly on the financial management of the school district. Then I wanted to skip towards the end of the financial statements, starting with the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, which is on page 125 in the financial statements, and really probably the best page to reference is page 127. Because the district expended more than $750,000 in federal awards, you're required to receive a special audit over those expenditures, often referred to as a single audit. This year, we audited the Child Nutrition Cluster Grant, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which again is the best opinion the district can receive. And I'm happy to report that we did not have any deficiencies that we noted as part of auditing that grant. Then separate from the financial statements is our auditor's communication letter to those charged with governance, which is our letter to keep all of you informed about significant matters relating to the audit. I won't go through every point in this letter, but we'll just kind of hit some of the key points this evening. The first is on the bottom, towards the bottom of the first page, and notes that the district did not adopt any significant new accounting policies, or there were no new accounting standards that were required to be implemented by the district this year. Also, I'm happy to note that we did not identify any significant unusual transactions as part of our audit. Then on to the next page, it discusses significant estimates that are included in the district's financial statements. Not every number in the financial statements is easily determinable. Some of these amounts have to be estimated, and these estimates include the total other post-employment benefit liability, the net pension liability, management's estimates for accrued compensated absences, and then estimates for claims liabilities for workman's compensation and health insurance liabilities that are included in the financial statements. And then the last section I wanted to point out is towards the bottom of that second page in that letter, and discusses audit adjustments and uncorrected misstatements. We didn't have any audit adjustments that we noted as part of our audit. We do have a note in there that there are some adjustments that are made to the district's records. The district keeps their records on a regulatory basis of accounting, a budgetary basis of accounting, and some adjustments are made to be in full GAAP in compliance with the financial statements. The district has a process in place to review those adjustments and provide us with the information to make those adjustments so that the financial statements are properly stated in accordance with GAAP. And then I'm also happy to note that we did not have any uncorrected misstatements that we noted as part of our audit. Ultimately, for our audit, there's several goals that we tried to determine. Do the books and do the financial statements accurately reflect the books and records of the entity that we're auditing? Is the entity in compliance with laws and regulations? And then, are internal controls in place and operating effectively? And I'm happy to, again, report that the answer to all of those questions is yes. In conclusion, I'd like to thank Cassie and all of the staff at the district that we work with. An audit is always a huge undertaking for any entity, and we appreciate all their help and assistance in completing the audit this year. So thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions you may have for me.
Board, any questions? Okay, sufficient wait time, I think. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Cassie, and the staff here, and John Hutchison as well. He keeps directing it to you, Cassie. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a school spotlight. Principal Mike Wiley from California Trail Middle School. Welcome.
Good evening. Before I get started, I wanted to thank Dr. Jaeger, Dr. Waters, and the Board of Education for this opportunity to speak about a school I love full well, nod to Kansas State over there, Dr. Jaeger, California Trail Middle School. I also want to thank Girl Scout Troop 3257 for their help leading the pledge tonight. My name is Mike Wiley, and I'm the proud principal of California Trail. I'm in my 10th year working with our amazing staff, students, and families. As I started thinking about this presentation a couple of months ago, I knew I'd need some help, not to come up with content, but to keep it to a reasonable amount of time for this evening, so I didn't take up too much. With that in mind, with that goal in mind, I plan to utilize the help of some students and staff members via video tonight, and they will share, help me share in this presentation that Dr. Cronin's Communications Media Class helped me put together. When I asked others what makes CT a special place, relationships and connections were clear answers from many of them. With the theme of connect this year, that may have had a little bit of influence on that. But we are very proud of the connections that our staff, families, and students have in so many ways at California Trail. California Trail opened in 1996, welcoming students from Bentwood, Heatherstone, Pleasant Ridge, and Regency Place. The majority of our students leave us heading to Olathe East. This year, we have an enrollment of 586 students. That puts us right in the middle of our 10 Olathe Middle Schools in terms of enrollment. CT has a rich history of academic achievement. We are very proud of our two National Spelling Bee champions, our nine Science Olympiad state championship teams, and our state championship math counts team, and many other national and state-level competitors. We're also very proud of our city championships in volleyball, football, basketball, and track. One of the ways that students connect at CT is through activities and athletics that I just mentioned. Here, I'd like to hear from a couple of our students about some of the things that they are currently involved in at CT.
Here at CT, what our many things get involved is from sports to performing arts, the musical arts, academic, and interest-based clubs. There is something for everybody at California Trail.
In the fall semester, we have four sport offerings: football, volleyball, cross-country, and girls' basketball. Thirty-three percent of our students were involved in one of those sports facilities.
CT also offers cheer, dance, and a fall musical, giving students opportunities to perform a photo card. Twenty-four percent of our Bulldogs were involved in one of those performing arts this fall.
Musical arts are also big at CT. We offer man, choir, and orchestra, and have 66% of our students participating in one of those co-curricular activities. And if any of those aren't of interest, or even if a student is involved with some of the things already mentioned, we also have academic and interest-based clubs. Fifteen percent of our student body is involved with math club, science Olympiad, art studio, anime club, or our newest offering, Warhammer Game Club.
I'm Mitchell Carter. I'm involved in football, Jasmine, and I will be trying after that.
I'm Lola Armstrong, and I'm involved in volleyball and choir.
I'm Tommy England. I'm involved in football and track.
I'm Jada Soul, and I was involved in volleyball.
Athletics and activities aren't the only way students connect. Let's hear from a couple of students about their experience at California Trail.
What do you like most about CT?
Oh, what I like most about CT is just like all the teachers and the staff and stuff, and then all my friends and the students are really nice in our grade.
For me, what I like most about CT is all the teachers and the fun activities we get to participate in, especially like going to volleyball games, or watching the cheer team perform, or going to football games. And then I really like creating relationships with my teachers.
Okay. The second question is, talk about the ways you have been connected to other students and staff.
Oh, some of the ways I've been connected to the other students and staff is like the staff is like, they're really nice, and like, it's really easy to talk to them. Not just about stuff related to school, but like, stuff related to other stuff, like, not just school. And then the students, the class that I got of 2029 is really good. They're all really calm and really nice to each other, and we all talk.
For me, I connect with my teachers in different ways, as in like, talking not just about school and like, what we're doing, but talking about like, your life and what you did over the weekend. And then I really like connecting with the office staff because they're really nice. And then our school officer that we have here, I really like talking to her, and everybody's really just kind and caring.
What are you involved in, and what are some things you have the most fun doing in your time at CT?
Something I'm involved in is basketball. I'm on the basketball team, and sports is just really fun. It's fun, like, coming up even other sports and watching those sports games. And another fun thing I like doing is the doggone day that Mr. Kendall's had. I love doing that. It was such a fun, good idea.
For me, when I was in sixth grade, I was involved in orchestra, and then I also did the musical, and I was on costume crew, which was a really fun experience, and there were a lot of different people that you get to meet. And then, right now, I'm doing FCA, which is Future Christian Athletes, and that's a fun thing we do in the morning.
What area or subject do you think you have grown the most at in CT?
Probably the subject I've grown the most at is probably ELA. All the teachers I've had for ELA, and just all the teachers in general, have been really good. But ELA, I've learned a lot, and I've grown a lot better.
For me, it would be science class. In sixth grade, I had Ms. Anderson, and right now I have Ms. Beam, and both of whom are really good teachers, and they're very easy to understand when they teach, and they give a lot of information, and a lot of the projects are really good.
Thank you.
One way we help students connect with each other, our school and the community as a whole, is through a group called Sources of Strength. Next, we have a couple of members to explain what that is all about.
Can you tell us a little about Sources of Strength?
Sources of Strength is dedicated to make CT a better place for everyone.
We have Sources of Strength here at CT, and teachers choose representatives, and they are like chosen to make CT a better place.
And Sources of Strength, the students, they choose like different activities to do, and they consider all the different problems that could be at CT and help solve them.
What is the activity that you are responsible for and has a major impact?
I am in the announcements group of Sources of Strength, and we always try to spread a positive message for everyone in the school.
I'm in charge of the food drive group, so we, every fall, we have a two-week food drive, and we, this year, we collected 523 items, and then after the food drive is over, we send them all to a local food bank.
I'm part of the docile tournament group at CT, and we're trying to like get everyone together for like this fun, fun day, where you pay like, you pay money to get in, to try to play, and all that money, the winner chooses where all that money goes to.
What other areas are you involved with at CT?
I'm in orchestra, and I do basketball.
I am in choir, and I'm in theater.
I'm in band, theater, basketball, science, and a little bit of the arts.
Program that we started in 2017 called CT Cares, or CT Serves. On one day, we have all of our students and the majority of our staff out in the community, performing some sort of community service. Have a couple of students to share about that.
Can you tell us a little bit about CT Serves?
So CT Serves is when everywhere in the school, everybody in the school goes out and to different parts of the community and help out with different activities.
We spend a day to just like, everyone signs up for what they want to do to help out in like the world, and we all like go out to different places to help out, and some people stay here.
Where have you served each year, and what do you think the impact is?
Each year I've been at CT, I've went to Uplift, and we store clothes and make food, and then we go out into the community downtown and pass it out to homeless people.
My sixth and seventh grade year with Ms. Beam, I did the crafts with cancer patients, and so I made a bunch of crafts for these cancer patients, and I think it made a big impact on them because they got to like get this joyful gift from like these middle schoolers that are just giving them like something to look forward to. And then my eighth grade year, I went to Regency Place, and we just helped with the kids, and we picked up trash outside, and I think it made a big impact because like the kids get to see like what school they're going to, like how they get to help out in the world too.
Serves, many of our students and families have found a great joy in serving. In fact, the young man in the middle there on this video has logged over 100 hours going back to serve at Uplift in our community, making a real positive impact there. Connecting with our parent community is also a huge part of the success of our building. We are fortunate to have two parent groups, our PTO Bulldog Backers, as well as our CT Fathers Club, that work to not only support students and staff, but find different ways to impact our community as a whole. The heart of our school, though, is our staff. As principal of California Trail, I'm so proud of the ownership this group takes in our building. When our staff came out of COVID and things were tough everywhere, we had leaders on our staff that jumped in to do, to provide opportunities to pull us even closer together. From book clubs to softball, buncow, volleyball, theater, and more, these Bulldogs like to be around each other, and they care for each other tremendously. The connectedness is what sets the tone for this building, but you really should hear it from some folks that know better than I. CT is a special place. On average, we have, our staff has 19 years of experience in education, and our staff members have over 11 years on average in the building. It's a great place, and the longevity is something that this group knows a little bit about. I'm sitting here today with three of our original Bulldogs from when this building opened in 1996. I ask you guys, what are some of the things that make people want to stay around?
When I opened the building, I was living in the attendance area, so all of my kids came through, and I wasn't teaching, and I was teaching math at the time. I wasn't teaching just students. I was teaching my friends' children. And that commitment and feeling tied to the community was a big part for me of why I wanted my kids to attend here, even though they could have gone anywhere. We've only had four administrators in all of this time, and they have been very high-quality, very committed to supporting us and letting us do our best work with kids. It's just a great place to be.
Thank you, guys, for sharing. I appreciate you taking the time to shoot this today, to share with our Board of Education and our community at large. But more importantly, I thank you for your dedication to our students, to each other, and to our community. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope my friends and I have given you a glimpse into some of the things that we love about California Trail. It's really a great place to teach, to learn, to laugh, and to lead. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Oh, wait, Mr. Wiley, there might be some questions.
See, I thought I could run off.
I didn't tell you about that part. Board, Will? You should be good.
I just wanted to appreciate the throwback shirt that the last, the last teacher's had with the junior high CT GHS.
She's here in the audience tonight.
Love the throwback shirt.
She was pretty proud of that when she came in.
Think you need to sell those in the Spirit Store to raise them. That was all.
They're in now.
Thank you for the presentation.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item, when the board approved a cellphone or personal electronics device policy in the fall, in August, right before school started, we did ask for an update in December, and so we have some representatives of our schools, admin representatives here this evening. And so, Dr. Smith, do you want to lead off here?
I'd love to start. Thank you for the opportunity. We asked an administrator from each of our three levels to come and share some highlights and some updates with the new cellphone policy, so I'm going to let Dr. Harrison introduce our elementary representative.
So first this evening, we have Laura Donzila, the principal at Pleasant Ridge Elementary. Good evening. As Dr. Harrison said, my name is Laura Donzila, and it is my privilege to be the principal at Pleasant Ridge Elementary. And on behalf of all the elementary principals, I would like to give an update on the new cellphone policy. I had the opportunity to serve on the Cellphone Committee, and I do believe the process of writing the policy, which allowed for feedback at all levels, contributed to the success that we are experiencing today. This topic was also added to all of our elementary principal meetings with the opportunity to share any challenges and problem solve if needed. Overall, it has been a very smooth transition at the elementary level. The changes started with the common messaging at the district level, which we were all able to duplicate across multiple platforms. While some elementary students have cellphones, they more commonly have smartwatches. Parents do send their child with the device for ease of mind at bus stops, on the bus, and for students who walk home. For the cellphones, most of us were already implementing that they remained in student lockers or backpacks throughout the day, so that has been easy to continue. For the smartwatches, we have worked with students and families for students to either turn their smartwatch to the do-not-disturb mode or to also keep their watch in their locker or their backpack. Many of us were having to refocus students from being on their watches throughout the day, and many students were receiving texts and even calls on their watches, which I'm happy to report has stopped. This has resulted in less disruptions to instruction and learning. A question that has come up for students is to be allowed to wear their smartwatch during field trips. We have worked it out that their child wears the watch but keeps it on the do-not-disturb mode during the learning of the field trip. We are now at a place where we can be proactive with the policy. Our next steps include adding the information about the policy to our school-parent handbooks. We believe it has been a positive change, and even better, a really smooth transition. Thank you.
Thank you. And at the middle level, we have Brian Kendall from California Trail.
Good evening. I'm Brian Kendall, Assistant Principal at California Trail Middle School, and I appreciate that.
And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you tonight about the update that the cellphone policy has, or how it has impacted California Trail and honestly all middle schools. Um, I'm going to give you three different perspectives from the admin. I talked to a lot of teachers, so I'll give you the perspective from teachers and staff and then also from students. So from an admin perspective, it has positively benefited our school environment and student behavior. Um, one of the biggest things that I see is it has increased face-to-face interaction. Last year, I would walk down the hallways, there were so many heads down looking at their phones. I mean, it was every single passing period. Sometimes you'd say hi, sometimes they'd so be, be so engulfed with listening to their headphones or looking at their phone that they wouldn't respond back. And now I'm seeing smiling faces. I personally feel like I'm seeing less stress on the students, not having that on them. Um, and it has just, it's made a big impact so far on that front. The focus has shifted away from cellphone and virtual interactions between peers and it's encouraged them to have to talk and form genuine connections with each others, with each other, which is a life skill that every single kid needs rather than just communicating through a device. When I'm doing my walkthroughs, um, into classrooms, you could see sometimes last year when a kid's phone was going off, they were getting a phone call, they were getting a text. But that's not happening this year. They're not reaching for their pocket to turn off the vibration. They're not doing any of that. They are focused and they are engaged in the classroom and it's impacting learning. Lunch without phones has been a true blessing. Um, our lunch supervisors also said, we don't want computers at lunch as well. And so our admin team decided that we would support that. So they have no technology whatsoever at lunch and kids have had to talk to each other. Kids started bringing games. I've seen Uno. I've seen, uh, you know, you fold those paper footballs into triangles that I used to play when I was in school. I'm not undefeated anymore, but I do have a winning record. Okay? Um, but then Mr. Uker took it a step further and he emailed the whole staff and said, hey, if you have any games at home that you're not using, can you bring them in here? So we have two long white tables that sit in our lunchroom and every day, every lunch period, which we have three of them, we have 15 to 20 kids when they're done eating, go and play games with each other. And you can see them being competitive, having fun, laughing and smiling. And then lastly, it's definitely helped with, um, discipline as well. I've only had two or three instances this year where I've dealt with a conflict between something that's said between students on a cellphone this year. And last year, it was relatively consistent. And those are always challenging with finding the screenshots or finding the messages that were sent. And we haven't been dealing with that at all. Um, from a teacher's perspective, they have seen a lot of the same. Um, they've noticed that it's a lot harder for kids to be mean to each other face-to-face. It's real easy behind, behind the screen and bully or be mean to somebody else. And this has pretty much taken care of that in the school. Um, stu- teachers are also seeing that students are more focused and on topic in class, which has increased their learning. And we also had another teacher that said, this is the single greatest policy that Alitha has implemented in the 26 years that he has had the honor to work in Alitha Public Schools. Now, for the students, I would do, I would do some drive-bys. Okay? I would say, do you like it? Do you dislike it? Are you indifferent? Um, and some I had further conversations with. There were some like, but overall, there was a lot of dislike with that. Um, and most of them were for non-academic reasons. They miss social media. They miss texting their friends. They miss playing games. And, um, you know, some of them I furthered that conversation with them and they understood. Like, they just wanted to be able to be on it because it is an addiction. Um, and this is, I think, helping them out for the real world. So a couple examples that they gave where cell phones would be useful mostly came from our communication media's class and our yearbook class, because if they don't have a camera available, their computers don't take as good of pictures or videos. So that was some good feedback to hear when I was talking with kids. But overall, our cellphone policy has helped teach our students more technology habits that they're going to be using in their everyday lives and in the workforce. And I think it has been a tremendous thing that we've done this. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the time to talk about the implementation of the policy and especially at the high school level. Um, I can tell you from the seat that I sit in, we've not had issues that have risen to the district level as far as any type of discipline issues with the new policy or any issues even coming from parents. Not one contact. Um, I can also tell you, uh, Dr. Yeager and I, uh, meet with our superintendent student advisory council and that was a topic of one of our first meetings in the fall was kind of how's that going? And, uh, kind of to what Brian said, um, the majority of the students, uh, although some of them didn't like it, they, they knew it was probably best for them and the best thing to do. Um, and, and ultimately the majority of the students said it wasn't a big deal. Like it was a smooth transition, smooth implementation, and actually we're enjoying the way the, the policy is implemented. And did, and they spoke to it too about the, the lack of interruption of instructional time and them being able to concentrate more. So it's been, it's been positive at the high school level. But who we really want to hear from is Mr. Chris Zook, Alitha Northwest. He's going to talk to you about his experience at the building level at Alitha Northwest.
Thank you, Mr. Albers. Um, I will just say that overall, it's really been a non-issue. Um, it's been, again, not to echo, uh, other things that have been, that have been shared already, but, uh, probably not the, the kids' favorite, uh, policy that we've ever put in place. But, um, but the strengths or, or, or maybe some of the successes have included some, maybe some more instructional time and engagement in classrooms. Um, as you, as you walk in, you see, um, more heads, uh, kind of up and, and looking around rather than, uh, maybe in a lap or on a, or on a device. And, um, we, we've even in, in my conversations with students, they've commented that it, it is almost a sense of relief at times. But like from a high school pers- but like from a high school perspective is to, is to appreciate and, and acknowledge the differentiation by level that, uh, that this policy has. Um, I think it acknowledges the difference in maturity and responsibility that some of our high school students have with, for instance, part-time job or sibling care or other pieces that are just a little more closer to the adult, uh, part of things than maybe a, a, a third grader or a sixth grader or an eighth grader. And I, I think the use of parameters rather than a strict forbidden, uh, kind of forbidding of, of an activity. I think the use of the parameters allows our kids who are really close to being very independent to have some, um, some kind of adult-like and lifelike experiences in regards to how they manage the electronics at, at the high school level. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask, are there some questions, Board? Okay. I'm going to ask all three of you maybe to come back to the microphone, um, so you don't have to keep popping up. Will Babbitt.
My, my main question is what, what can we do to help you guys with this? I mean, we know, like the pros, cons are there. Anything we can look at, not, not today, but down the road that we can do to enhance it, shift it one way or the other to, this is for you guys and the teachers and for the students. So we want, obviously I know what I think of it, but I'm not in the classroom. So I want to know if there's anything we can do to enhance it for you guys.
I definitely appreciate the question and always appreciate the offer for support. I would say at this time, with how well things are going, I can't think of anything right off, but appreciate you asking.
Ditto. I would say, we've looked at, we talked about like the communication media and the yearbook. And right now with implementation being the first year, we just said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna figure it out. Um, that might be something to look at in the future, but it's hard to say yes, this class, because then I think that could be a dangerous road to go down. So, um, I'm liking what we're doing right now.
Uh, I just concur. I think at this point, you know, we're, we're four months in and I think that's a really good point to kind of do a, a check-in as you guys are, are doing tonight. But I don't know that there's anything that we want to, you know, want to really upset the apple cart at this point, because I think we're starting to see some, some positives. One of the conversations I had with kids really early on, because as you imagine, high school kids, they have feelings. And, um, I told them, I said, hey, I know you're not going to feel the impact of this in a positive way in your life in the near future. But I said, I wonder if come November or December, if you're going to notice that you sleep a little bit better or that you, or that maybe some of these other things that are attached to significant electronic device, that you're going to see improvements in your life or maybe development or relationships that look different and things like that. So I, I think that we're probably on the cusp of seeing some of that benefit. Um, so I would just say, I think we stay the course with where we are, because I think we're, we're in a, we're in a pretty positive place for now.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys' feedback. I, I want, I want this to be some of a, somewhat of an organic document that we can shift over, over time. Not necessarily now, but the more feedback we get now to be taken into account over the summer or anything like that would be very valuable, if you like. So, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to ask how you all feel. I mean, if you all want to speak or if just somebody has an opinion on, um, how the parental support has been for the policy as far as at school, um, community support, do you feel like you've had that in implementing this in the school environment?
At the elementary level, I would say the parent support has been very strong and high. And, um, there have been just a few questions here and there, but that was more around putting the smartwatches on do not disturb. And, um, we've just been able to talk through all of those. And so I would say overall, they, um, quickly understood the reasoning behind the implementation and have been completely supportive.
Yeah.
I would agree overall, yes. We've had, um, I mean, there's been a rise in some mental health issues lately. Um, and so parents, some parents of these students would like to be able to communicate with them more throughout the day. But we have created avenues, you know, coming to the nurse, coming to the office if you need to call. They're welcome to come into my office and call their parent if they need to, um, or for, if they're riding the bus or if they're getting picked up that day. But overall, it's been smooth and overall, we've been very supportive.
Good.
I don't know that I would add anything different.
Great, great. I do have a question for you, Mr. Zuck. Mr. Kendall talked about behaviors decreasing, negative behaviors decreasing at the middle school level. Do you feel like you've seen that in high school?
Um, I don't know that I could quantify that. Uh, I think that, um, our major emphasis has been on attendance this year. And so I haven't noticed even anecdotally a difference. Um, I think we see, and I think, I think other people have mentioned, we see interactions being more favorable and more personal and, and those kinds of things, which I think naturally has a, uh, builds relationships and builds bridges and kind of de- and would naturally decrease some of that. But I can't, I couldn't quantify that. But I'd say, I, I'd say there are, there are definite positive cultural impacts that come from, uh, the implementation of the policy.
Great. And you talked about appreciating the differentiation, which I think we were very willing to recognize and why that's important. Do you feel like that's also the case with passing periods and lunch? Or would it help you if we were, looked more like we've, um, look, we're looking for middle school?
Um, no, I think that the passing periods on the lunch, uh, I think there, it's an appropriate time period. I think kids are learning. I think it's really a valuable skill because we're talking about very limited amounts of time. We're talking about five minutes here or 25 minutes here, um, where we have to recover and we have to move back into a, a different mindset of, okay, I've got to put my electronic device away now. And that, that's more adult-like, right? That my phone buzzing in my pocket literally while I'm standing here and I'm not pulling it out to, like, those kinds of things, right?
Right, yeah.
That as 16, 17 and 18-year-olds, they have no experience doing until August to today. So I think that's been a real positive because again, more adult-like, they're really close to those independent decisions. We talked, I talked to them the other day. We, we had a presentation on fentanyl and they were glued. By the way, no, there are very few cell phones out and, um, it, it really, it's that idea of how do I manage my own behavior and how do I respond to the, to the things that are going on around me in an adult way, not just in a school and kid way.
Good, good. I will say as a parent of a high schooler currently, she, um, comes home from school and is somewhat of a fish that hasn't been in water all day. So we've had to do some parenting things at home and set some more parameters that we had, didn't have to before. But I'm happy to do that, knowing the engagement has increased during the school day. So that's great. And one last thing, Mr. Kendall, I appreciate you bringing up unintended consequences. I think that's always, um, a, a fear or a thought when you develop a new policy, um, that there's going to be those that are, are true deal breaker, breakers. So thank you for sticking with it. Maybe there are other ways of solving those problems so it isn't a negative impact on instruction, like get a few more cameras and whatever they need for comms that maybe doesn't involve personal devices so that they can still be learning, um, learning about that. So I think we can solve that. Yeah.
I agree.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate all the input.
Ms. Reagan.
Ah, there we go. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to each of you, but also to the principals, because I, I do understand when you have something that's new, um, getting the staff to buy in and having the fidelity to the, to the policy. That's what makes the policy impactful district-wide, right? Because all the kids, they talk to each other, especially at the upper grid levels. Well, my school isn't doing this and your school's doing that and blah, blah, blah. So I appreciate from your leadership standpoint, you know, the work that's gone into not giving in when the comms class was like, it would really be nice if we could use our phones. And, you know, and we know this, I think, just as, you know, adults, but also, you know, as a former educator, like sticking to your, your guns is, is important even when it's hard. And it actually sounds like this has been not as, as difficult as maybe was anticipated. But keeping the consistency throughout a building is maybe not always the easiest task. So I don't so much have a question, but just thank you, um, be creating a space where we could do something that we were hopeful would be beneficial to children and educators. It feels like it really has been. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've had parental support. Um, to reemphasize what was already said, if there's anything from the community standpoint we can do, because I do think electronic etiquette and electronic behavior, um, is something that as a society we're grappling with. I mean, we all have our phones out right now. I mean, thinking about just, it's, it is a really important skill. And admittedly, I, I've been kind of in the mindset of let's graduate the policy all the way to the top so it's all the same. But your point you just brought up, if we can't teach kids how to self-moderate their content, um, consumption, when are they going to learn that skill? So thank you so much. And, uh, no question. Shocker.
Anyone else? I would just add my appreciation for your presentations this evening and, um, for your resourcefulness and response when things have surfaced. Um, you mentioned the elementary kids on a field trip, um, to be able to work through those things. And, and I would assume there's been some conversation with our, um, senior leaders here sitting on the front row at each level as well. So I, I would just encourage you, um, to stay the course because I, I think, um, it has been positive for our district and for our students and our staff. And as things do surface, continue to talk about it in your level meetings with other administrators or, or with your colleagues. And then if there is a, a point in time where we do need to look at something to tweak, to add some language, please bring that to us as well. So thanks for your time this evening. Yeah. Dr. Yeager, sorry.
No, no problem. I was just gonna, before we go on, just offer a word of thanks to you as a Board of Education. Um, you know, it's interesting, just shortly after you started having this conversation, it seems like the whole world started having this conversation. But, um, and it is an example, I think, of just the forward-looking of this board, um, to really encourage us to have the conversation as a system. And so I just wanted to thank you for that and leading us this direction and also being ahead of the curve, um, what felt so slightly ahead of the curve, but ahead of the curve nonetheless. So thank you all for that.
I, I just wanted to add that, you know, they were talking about not wanting to change something mid-year, but I'm thinking about two weeks before prom, maybe we make a big change at the high school level. Just see how that goes. No, just, thank you. That was for all my, that was for my parent friends to have high schoolers so they can yell at them. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Steele.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education-
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals to address the Board. We ask that your comments be germane, that is related to the businesses Board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the President interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the Board, and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city, and state, and relationship to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. And tonight, our one and only speaker, Alexis Getzloff, thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Getzloff, Lenexa, Kansas, and I have three children currently in the Olathe School District, and one more that will follow in about two years. We live in the Manchester Park neighborhood, and my younger children walk to Manchester Park Elementary. And we have lived there for 11 years. Tonight, I would like to talk to you all about the proposed Lone Elm interchange that is being pushed by KDOT and appears the City of Lenexa, and how this will have a negative impact on the students in your district. My oldest student attends PRT, and he's in seventh grade. And we are lucky to have a bus option, because we don't have a direct route to the PRT-ONW area, because Lone Elm does not go through. Over those 11 years, we have often thought to ourselves, like, oh, if only a Lone Elm went through, we would just be right there. In the past, that was because we wanted to go visit friends, or go to Austin's very easily, walk, bike that area. And now with my oldest at PRT, he has participated in things like, he was on the cross-country team, he stayed after school to work on an art project that he wanted to finish. And he's just overall becoming more independent, which we love to see. And we're seeing that a connection of Lone Elm would really open up his world so much more, with his ability to walk or bike after school into school in the morning. Cross-country practice ends at four. I work, my husband works, and so my son needs to text us, and hopefully we can drop what we're doing and go pick him up at the variable times that he's finished at cross-country. If we had an overpass, he could bike or walk home, and he could very easily, you know, on a day that he needs to work with a teacher, or stay after to do something, he could manage that on his own, which is a skill we would love for him to have, of really starting to manage his own schedule, and wouldn't disrupt our workdays to come pick him up. He could also meet up with friends on the south side of K-10, all of those friends he goes to school with, but he can't go to hang out with them without us having to drive him. And if you recall, I have three other children. So I think also about other kids on the north side, other kids whose parents don't have flexible jobs and can't just show up at four o'clock to pick up a kid. Those kids probably have to say no to being on the cross-country team. And I think that that's a real downside for them on the north side, not being close enough to get themselves there. So also, you know, I've read studies that show kids learn problem-solving skills between the ages of eight and 12. This is the time we want to give them a little more freedom, a little more independence, to learn those adulting skills as they head out into the world. And the way that we can do that is letting them expand outside of our neighborhoods, but we can't do that if the roads are not safe. And if we prioritize commercial traffic over the community needs by putting an interchange at Lone Elm, that is not safe passage for students. That will include crossing crosswalks at 7:00 a.m. with semi-traffic on north and southbound, and a student of the age of 11 or 12 trying to cross those crosswalks, that's not really going to work for us. So what's going to happen is we will probably lose our busing, we will be one mile away. But my student can't walk, so now we become car drivers. As I said, my husband and I both work, this causes lots of problems logistically for us, but also causes more problems in that area with more cars. There's a lot of talk about all of the cars from the high schoolers and everybody dropping right into Lone Elm, right on top of that area. But I think also from the Lenexa perspective, this just really creates all sorts of challenges and unsafe conditions for our children. And very quickly, because I have a minute left, the Lenexa plan includes commercial traffic, getting off of the highway at Lone Elm and going on 101st. If you have ever driven that way, back entrance to the Manchester Park neighborhood, and the direct route into Manchester Park Elementary, I believe the largest elementary school in the district, we would then have potentially semi-trucks mixing in with students, and students walk on 101st and cross Lone Elm. This is a huge safety concern for not only the driving area around ONW, PRT, Meadow Lane, but then also for us up on Manchester Park. So what I am asking for today, and I appreciate that you all have had support for this in the past, is stronger worded support to KDOT, engagement with the City of Lenexa, and kind of like official backing of an overpass instead of an interchange. So thank you all for your time and your support and your prioritization of student safety.
Thank you. I would say, before you leave, that we have already, and you may know that, as a board, and Dr. Jaeger managed that, written to KDOT with the same concerns and the same support for an overpass versus an interchange.
Yep.
I know, I personally have had conversation with members of Olathe City Council who feel the same.
Agreed.
And so appreciate your time, and I know you mentioned that you also spoke to the Lenexa City Council earlier this week.
Correct.
And this was a much friendlier group, she indicated.
I had to say, I knew I was walking into a friendlier group tonight.
Like mind thinkers. But we appreciate your time, and we'll continue to have those conversations and extend that support and opinion as well.
I appreciate it. I would really just want to emphasize that the City of Lenexa, since the school district does cover both Olathe and Lenexa, Olathe and Lenexa don't seem to owe each other much as a city, but you all cover both, and the City of Lenexa is the real wild card here. And so we really appreciate some time. We know that Olathe is on this side, but there are a large group of Lenexa resident parents of students in the district that are very energized about this, just in the last two weeks. So would love some support at the city level with Lenexa.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Board action consent items, would welcome a motion 6.01 to 6.08.
Move to approve action consent 6.01 through 6.08.
Second.
Motion by Julie Steele, second, Brad Boyd. Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Action bid contracts and agreements, 7.01 to 7.07.
I move to approve action space contract agreement 7.01 through 7.07 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Brad Boyd, second by Robert Kuhn. Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Under other action, 8.01, the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Claire Reagan, second by Will Babbitt. Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. 8.02, Board Policy Updates.
I move to approve updated Board Policies. Will wanted me to say all the letters, anyway, just so you know. Board Policies, EE, IDA, IDB, IDD, IDDB, IDDD, and JBCC as presented.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Johann, a second by Mr. Babbitt. Before we vote, I would like to ask a couple of questions. And Board, this is the item, the data that I provided, you would apply to Dr. Reeves. If you could respond, under Policy IDD, the grades and credit, which is where we are specifically within that policy, moving from a grade ranking to cum laude. If you could share just a little bit about who was involved in the research and decision-making to identify those classifications, and then any comments that you have on this data would be appreciated as well.
Sure. So when the graduation requirements were enacted for this year's freshmen, part of that process was to begin looking at, just as you know, we had a board workshop on graduation requirements, but also to begin looking at potentially how we recognize students at graduation, and potentially moving to a cum laude system, which is similar to what some of our surrounding districts use as well. And so we spent a good part of the year last year with staff from Learning Services, working with our senior leadership team, our middle school and high school principals, counselors at those levels, some staff who also then, you know, kind of view that process through multiple lenses as a parent, as a teacher, and then participated with you all in a board workshop to kind of work through some of those, with the idea that we were looking to do what we could to help make sure that we recognize as many kids as we can at graduation for their accomplishments. And so one of the things that we did was Alicia Jackson, our Assistant Director over College and Career Counseling, worked heavily or closely with the state and our end-district team to kind of make sure that we understood what graduation requirements were, but then also looked at what our benchmark districts or surrounding districts were doing in terms of the recognition as well. And then pulled our graduation GPA, kind of top 10, top 10+ looked at those requirements, and then also spent some time looking at what that cum laude system might look like, and how that might change the students that we would recognize. There are lots of reasons around that, and we've, I think, had some discussion in previous years about the possibility of making those changes, and it seemed like a good time with those graduation requirements to do that. We came back and forth several times to high school principals, visited with them a little bit about what those levels would look like, what factors or what considerations would be included in that. We landed on that weighted GPA piece to determine those levels. We then took the data you have in front of us, Alicia Jackson, then kind of looked at some of our surrounding districts and kind of their processes or their requirements, and looked at how many students they recognized. And then we went through each of our own high school groups, or high schools, and looked at the 23 and 24-year data, just to look at how many kids would have been recognized differently than what our current top 10% graduating recognitions would look like, so.
And for clarification, this will apply to which graduating class?
It would be the class of 2028.
Okay.
So this year's freshman, incoming freshman.
And how will it be communicated, then, to those students, or has that already been?
So as we have, last year, when we started with our enrollment process, we have communicated that to our eighth graders as they enroll. And then we will kind of live in two systems, and we shared this before, we will live in two systems as we kind of finish up our current group of students in high school on the current system. But those freshmen, the class of 2028, will begin operating in that cum laude system.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions related to the information provided tonight, or just in general? Ms. Steele?
I appreciate that explanation, Dr. Reeves. And what I hear you saying is, this is, when you say a way to recognize more kids, in one weekend, we graduate nearly 2,000 kids. So recognizing more is good, but it isn't necessarily the can't everybody get a trophy argument, because it's still very competitive. And a wildly accepted system of differentiating the grading system, and capturing more that are in this top level, well, really in every level. So we're recognizing more kids, but it's still very competitive. Maybe that's what I'm trying to say. Am I understanding that right?
Correct, correct. And I think oftentimes, and Ms. Ralston probably speaks to this better than me, you know, that top 10%, and then the looking at kind of that final semester and the students that we recognize, like, there's very little that separates sometimes those kids at that very top tier. And kids are missing it by, you know, tenths of a point. And so this allows the opportunity for us to recognize all kids who fall in that particular range for their achievements and their hard work.
It also seems to direct the competition with yourself, rather than against your peers.
Right.
If I'm understanding that right. Like, challenge yourself in a way that isn't focused on where everybody else is at with their GPA.
Right, right.
Yeah. Wildly supportive.
And I think I spoke earlier, I said this year's freshmen, and I think we're talking about the current kids. It will be the class of 2028. That was the right guess.
I would just add, from a high school perspective, being a former high school principal, and the process was excellent. Alicia worked with our high school principals, and Learning Services worked with our high school principals, really fine-tuning those levels and those cutoffs, per se, of the different levels. And it's very much appreciated by our high school principals. So over the years, the top 10 process, it's stressful, not only for kids and parents, but administrators as well. So that's an added benefit, kind of a side benefit, not only getting to recognize more kids, but, and ultimately, it's the system that all of our sister districts around us operate in, as do most universities also. So it's familiar to people also.
I would say also with the three different levels, cum laude, magna, and summa, you know, a student who perhaps even is on track to be summa, but they have a misstep, they're still being recognized. And magna cum laude is an amazing recognition after four years of high school. So I think it allows students to challenge themselves, as Ms. Steele said, and not always be focused on what's that person's GPA, I've got to do better than that. And maybe take some risks or challenging courses that they wouldn't have otherwise. So, Dr. Jaeger?
Oh.
Like mine. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Johann.
I get that right?
Yep, I just saw, as I turned, I saw your name, yes.
Now, I forgot what I was, oh, I forgot what I was going to say for a moment. So I was just kind of curious if this would affect college application status, perhaps, where they would be able to put this as something versus top 10, if that's something that's more widely recognized at that level for those high school students graduating?
You know, just as top 10 would, obviously, it's a huge feather in the cap of those that achieve these levels as far as college applications. And as we talked about, most of our surrounding districts already operate under this system, so it's very familiar to colleges. It won't be any It won't be anything different than they're used to seeing on college applications.
I guess where my question was setting them apart versus top 10. You know, this would be like on par with the rest of every other language. And so we could give them an advantage that didn't perhaps before.
And more kids also to have, be able to note that on their college applications also.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bean. Dr. Yurkovich. Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Reeves and Mr. Albers. And Alicia Jackson is with her son tonight, but to everyone who worked on that for our kids. Okay. We are to future action items. And I want to draw attention to a couple of things related to future action items. One, as we all know, today is December 5th. Winter break starts December 20th. And then staff come back the 3rd, I believe. Is that correct? And then we have a board meeting the 9th. So my point being, or encouraging board members to read through those future items before winter break. And if you have questions, maybe to reach out so that staff have time and there's not a huge scramble coming back from winter break and trying to respond to some questions before our board meeting. And this is a reminder to myself as well, because I shared in that this week. To draw attention to the first two future action items, resolutions to establish regular meeting dates, a state statute indicates that boards should do that in January because of our calendar year aligning with our fiscal year and because of when we elect officers. We enter this resolution to actually set those dates beginning in July rather than in January. So that's what this resolution is, to just make that adjustment. And then the second one, election of school board officers. As you know, we have elected officers in July. And this resolution actually proposes electing in June. The new leadership for the board would take over in July. But honestly, it's just a little awkward to come to a meeting, be elected president, and then change seats. And all of a sudden, you're facilitating the meeting. The other part of that is it would allow whoever's elected to participate in the planning meeting for the board with the superintendent and the vice president, whereas that doesn't occur either if the person's not elected until the beginning of the July meeting. So does that make sense? Okay. So that's what those two resolutions, I think the others are pretty self-explanatory, but just a reminder of our kind of shortened time period between now and our January board meeting. There were written items attached in the board docs. One of them with Learning Services had information about the cum laude as well, had the chart. So I'm sure that was familiar before this evening. And then parent teacher conference totals. We want to say something about those.
Yeah, I can mention a couple of things about that. And Dr. Smith, maybe will chime in a little bit as well since she keeps track of all of our information there. But you may remember in February last year, when the board looked at the written report from February conferences, we talked about a real need to really look and analyze if, you know, what we were doing is best practice. And a lot of that goes to what you can see on the chart. That is that conference participation is really high in elementary, but middle drops off and then high school drops off even more. You know, we talked last February about a lot of reasons for that. A lot of things have changed in the way we communicate student information with parents since back in the day when we started parent teacher conferences. But based on all the things happening in our system and change for this year, we've not assembled a team to, you know, get together to talk about that and what have you. I know there's certainly a willingness on, certainly our part, I think. And I think O N E A in terms of representing the bargaining unit would probably, you know, be happy to have that conversation as well. But that really is our next step, I think, in responding to the data that we're seeing with that. Dr. Smith, is there anything else that you would add?
Nothing else from me to add except for, I just want to remind the Board of Education that we do consider whatever communication is had between a faculty member and a parent as communication during that entire week. So it is the entire week of October 14th. The same will be the case February 10th during that entire week. So if there was an email communication, maybe back and forth, if there was a Zoom, a virtual meeting, an in-person meeting, a phone call, all of those are taken into consideration for participation in a parent teacher conference.
And I will mention in the past, when we've studied this, you know, it's been a pretty comprehensive thing. And I think it will need to be again this time as well. Last time we did it was probably 10 or 12 years ago, I would suspect, maybe a little less than that. But part of it was community survey, surveying our staff just so we had really robust information about meeting the needs of, you know, our parents and guardians in our district, but also meeting the needs of our staff. So there was a mechanism to get the information and have the conversations that they wanted to with families.
Ms. Reagan.
I was curious about the percentages. You know, elementary is pretty straightforward. You know, one conference, one student, one teacher, all that. But for high school and middle school, the percentages, is it a percent of the students or a percent of all possible conferences? Because given the multiple periods of the day, you know, there's an opportunity for each student to have seven conferences. So how, I just wanted to know what that percentage reflected.
Yeah.
I know at the secondary level, a lot of times they will meet as a team, but each teacher does have a recording document. And so they will record if they met with that family. So the percentages would be, I guess, clarify your question. Sorry.
So I guess, is it 41% of all middle school students, parents, guardians, had a conference? Or is it 41% of all possible conferences took place? Because the number of possible conferences in a middle and high school are, because you have six or seven teachers.
Yeah. I think it's more of like, if a team has 100 kids and that teacher says, I saw 41% of my student, or 40% 1%, that would mean that.
Well, in middle school would be different then, right? Because you have the teams where in high school it would be.
It's the total number of periods and who they saw. Yes, it could be very large.
So I guess I'm just wanting to make sure, because we probably have parents who go to, like especially in high school level where you don't have the overlapping of professionals because you don't have a team. You could, I just wanted to make sure the data isn't recording. You know, you have parents who go to all five, all six, you know, all those conferences. You know, if they're counting five or six times? Or if it's, I'm not even sure how I'm asking this. It just makes sense.
It's a good question.
Because I also know, just having taught in the secondary level, often the kids whose adults you want to talk to aren't often the ones who come. And then as students get older, there's less. But I just.
So I think what you're asking, are we seeing 35% of the kids represented? Or are we 35% of the total possible conferences, correct? And I believe the answer is we're receiving 35% of the students.
I would say yes at middle. I'm.
Yeah. Teachers record every interaction they have, as I spoke to, whether it be a phone conference that week, Zoom conference. So that's the number that is turned in from each teacher and then coagulated for the building and then across all the levels.
Okay, that's, so that's skewing our data.
Yeah. Because it's, like, because a family who met with four different teachers is counted four times. So as long as the denominator of that equation is a reflection of all the possible, do you get what I'm saying? I mean, I just, I just saw that number.
Yeah, I believe the denominator then though is the total possible number of conferences. So seven for each kid.
Right.
So ultimately, a huge denominator, right?
Yes, yes. And I guess I'd be curious what that denominator, I'd be curious about what those numbers are. And then I also, you know, is this trending down? Or is it flatlined as far as the participation at the secondary level?
It's always been much lower secondary, the way we're reporting it. Let us, let us have just a day or two to dig into this just a little bit.
I asked you this before.
No, I didn't say you didn't. But as we look across the front row, I'm not sure we're even clear about that. So let us become clear on it and we'll definitely get some more information.
I'm not a numbers person, so this is very hard for me.
It's a really, it's a really good question.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
As Dr. Yurkovich and I were talking about that, not that particular thing, but talking about conferences this week, she had a really good point that another data point that might be worth investigating is what does sixth grade and ninth grade look like versus the other grades at that level? Because we might see something kind of interesting if we're going to change how we do it or kind of adopt a different way of getting in touch with parents. Those two levels might show us something different. I thought she had a really good point.
Let us dissect the numbers just a little bit more. And we will bring back something in January-ish, maybe before February conferences. So we're tight on that then. But let us dissect it a little bit more and we'll get you some information that way. Great questions.
Thank you. Okay, topics for discussion. Ms. Steele.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. I'll try not to go long. I first wanted to start with closing out 2024. And what a great year this has been as a board member and all of the things we've been able to truly focus on that really matter for students and for student success. So it's been a really great year. I also want to say, you know, with all the changes that we've had since August, and that would be school day starting in times for nearly 28,000 students, which means roughly, give or take, 56,000 parents. We implemented the personal device policy. We're now rolling out a late start option for inclement weather. A big focus on absenteeism and working with our community and our parents on that. So I just want to say to parents, thank you. We see you. We are you. We thank you. We're grateful for the ways that parents show up for this district, making it strong and always improving. So I just wanted to say that. And then the other thing, kind of just a theme I've noticed a while, but in particular, the last couple of weeks, that, you know, Olatha Schools is always ahead of the curve, but also always looking to improve. And some examples of that would be, you know, from school safety. We have a neighboring district that is just now looking into our crisis alert system that we've had for two and a half years now, three years now. And, you know, they're looking at that because they have seen what we're doing. And it's been a fabulous system. We've heard from Mr. Keiger on that. And it's going, it's going really well. We were a trendsetter. You know, we developed a personal device policy before the state recommended that there be a task force that K S D E decided to look into. You know, we're ahead of the curve there. And this year, we have had a massive increase to classified positions that directly impact the student learning of our most vulnerable students. And that is the success of a lot of people, but a lot of our senior leaders in the district making that happen. And so, you know, I just, I think about what makes Olatha School so strong is we really are, we're always ahead of the curve, but not one person that contributes to that is interested in resting or stopping. They're always looking for the next way to make sure we are improving what we do for students. And it just makes me so proud to be a part of that. Lastly, is to my fellow board members, I won't get all up in my feels, but to all six of you, you know, we have had the opportunity this semester, and I won't go into details because I'm sure our community will hear much more about it next semester as it unfolds. But we have touched every single certified staff member in this district in one way or the other. And we have done that with our O N E A, with our superintendent leadership team, with the blessing and encouragement of the Olatha Chamber of Commerce. And we've had over 58 meetings this semester. And for a team of seven to be a part of that and contribute to that, it makes me very proud of how we've come together to support the district, but we've done it as a team. So thank you to my fellow board members. It is a pleasure to serve with every single one of you. So that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Reagan.
Great segue, Mrs. Steele. I just, you know, the conversations we had around the district this semester, I think I got to attend, I don't know, 11 of them. They kind of all run together, but there are very distinct moments that I will remember from each as we go back to the conversation table to find things we can do to make sure Olatha stays a place where people want to work and serve our children, because that's why we're all here. I found myself just over Thanksgiving being so grateful for our district and the role it plays in our community, for the teachers, for the staff, for the people who, you know, wipe the noses, Band-Aid the knees, proofread the paper, write the letter of rec, clean the classrooms and all of that. And we are a special place and we can, it's easy to say, but just talking to different people who work in spaces in different areas of the country, different areas of the metro, I know that I feel particularly grateful to be in this community with this district. And with the emphasis on attendance and making sure kids get to school, the partnership with parents and guardians is so important. But I also appreciate the educators who know the role they play because sometimes that teacher is the brightest face that the student will see. And your help and support and making sure we're all together on that, I know it's asking you to, you know, do one more thing, but it's a team effort and I appreciate that, especially when you know you're that beacon for that child. It makes such a huge difference. Yeah, I just, I find myself very grateful. It's a season of that. And especially for our facility staff who's going to be dealing with the winter weather and all the ice and the snow and the salt and that. I know a lot of people are grateful for you on those cold mornings when everybody's walking in the building. So I look forward to the work ahead, as Mrs. Steele said, where we kind of process the feedback we've gotten from our certified and licensed staff, as well as the roundtables we've been hearing from our classified. The legislative session will be coming up on us the next time we have a board meeting. And I will just say, the fuel behind what our district is able to accomplish, that financial backing comes from Topeka. And so just helping make sure that we all pay attention and advocate for what is best for the students of Olatha and the staff who work here, that will be something that you can count on me reminding all of us. But just gearing up and maybe figuring out who your representative and senator is now, whether you live in the district, I know we do have staff who don't live in the district, but they work here. You can contact both your reps from the district and from where you live. So thank you very much. An early Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, all the things. That's all.
Anyone else?
This is a little bit.
Ms. Johann.
Yes. Good evening. So my story is going to be a little bit different, but I had the opportunity to go to the Lenex City Council meeting earlier this week as well and listen to the feedback. And my 10-year-old daughter went with me. And I thought that was really kind of neat. And so honestly, I just said, okay, you know, you want to listen? What do you want to do? And she starts listening to people. And then she takes a paper from me and she grabs a pen and she starts writing something down. I said, well, you want to say something? She goes, I think I do. I think I do. And so she wrote it down. She had a statement. And so I walked up there with her so she could make her statement. And I think about all the moments in her, in her, what? She's a fifth grader now, that had put her and built her up to this point because she was a COVID kindergarten, kindergarten, kindergartner. kindergartner, didn't know how to read and really very, very shy. And so to have this moment the other night where she stood up there, addressed the mayor of Lenexa, you know, and got a compliment, the only one that got a compliment that night. Anyway, but I just thought it was a really, a really proud moment for me as a mom and also as a public advocate and just seeing this, you know, kind of come around and say, you know, our kids are watching us and I'm appreciative of all the educators that have have touched this, this child and and so thank you and this city, our season of thankfulness and and coming up on the holidays. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Mr. Babbitt.
Man, everybody's got the feels tonight. I'm just, I, I, today I attended the Countryside Spelling Beat and it was so, I actually learned something from it when they said that Olathe has supplied several national school spelling beat champions, which obviously then came up later, later this evening. It was so amazing to watch these kids compete against each other, but with such great sportsmanship and the entire school sitting silently. After 60 rounds, there was still two of them left and they have to continue tomorrow.
Oh, my gosh.
It was, it was really fun to watch. But that kind of leads into what I'm, I want to talk about what I'm thankful for. My, my son at JCPRD made one of those little wheels that has what I'm thankful for and he can turn it and see what they all are. I started to think a little bit about myself and obviously I have my family that I am, I'll say the most thankful for, but I, when I ran for this position, I looked at it more of a duty, as a duty, you know, something that I thought I could be a good fit for and that I could advocate for. But I've actually come to enjoy it somehow. So I just want to thank all of you, all of you and the community at large for supporting us and supporting this district. It's, it's been a really enjoyable endeavor so far. I also was able to attend the Santa Fe Trail Little Mermaid musical, which was adorable. And it was so fascinating to watch these kids do all of the lights and the soundboard, way more than just the people up on stage and just to see them engage the so much of the school in something like this. And I took my nine-year-old and he was excited watching all of the different parts. So it was really neat to watch that. And last thing, I want to talk about the OPSF breakfast that I attended. The, watching the community poor support in this school district was, I saw it last year, but it just, it blows my mind how much they support this district and the community at large. And from all the partners and from the foundation itself, it was, it was amazing to see. So thanks for, to them and to the community at large for supporting our entire school. And, oh, and the kids singing and dancing at it were, were amazing. It was so cool. And that's it. Thank you.
I would add my appreciation as well for this semester, the leadership that has been provided by our district leadership and those in the building as well on a daily basis, that, that makes the difference and and provides the success. And and I would thank your, thank you for your support for us as board members also because several of us are newbies in the last year, sitting in these, in these seats and and becoming familiar with the district. So thank you for that support. I'll, I'll add my appreciation also for the dialogues that we participated in and they've been mentioned, but we have ONEA reps sitting in the audience tonight who've been part of that. And I, I think that show of collaboration with our ONEA and our senior leadership and and board, when we were at the KASB conference and talked about that, it's, it's unique. People have not seen that before. And then you add to the fact that we're doing it at 58 sites with over 5,000 staff. But I do appreciate our building principals facilitating those opportunities and our staff participating, because it was an additional meeting, as we all know, an additional hour to their workday, whether it was early morning or after. And the value that I think we will glean from those conversations could have not been gathered any other way. So I, I do appreciate that. I actually have a topic for discussion that I would like to engage the board in this evening. And is it possible to just open their mics so I don't have to? Yeah. Okay, they're all open, guys. So this is, has been a conversation, Ms. Steele, I think first surfaced, a topic, and and she and Dr. Yeager and I have talked about it. We've talked with some senior leadership team members and how could we facilitate? And so this is really where we have landed, to, to get some feedback from all of you and see if there's an interest. And so before I just ramble on, I'll tell you what I'm talking about. Yeah, yeah. Soon after the first of the year professional council will begin meeting again with district leadership or district members and then ONEA staff. And I would like your thoughts, ideas, willingness of of an individual to have a board member in the room at those conversations, not participating, but actually sitting in the room to hear the conversation between the, the two organizations. I think the, the benefit, there are a number of benefits. One, for that individual to learn more about the process, to see it in action. Obviously, we get updates and appreciate that information, but it's another person who can participate in those updates during executive session. When we do have those conversations, it would, again, not be participating. It's, it's an individual to be present, to observe, not part of the discussion or involvement in the process. But, and I know this is the third time I've said it, but, but I want to reinforce that so that there's that understanding. So it would, it would require, I, I talked with Mr. Albers. In January, there's an organizational meeting where the, the two groups come together and just talk about when and, you know, when letters will be exchanged, which will be in February, and then when meetings will begin. Typically, and correct me if I have any of this wrong, there are one or two meetings prior to spring break. And then after spring break, it's pretty much weekly until there's an agreement to bring to the board. And so that would obviously be a time commitment. Meetings are outside of the school day and the date and time is determined by the, both groups and professional counsel, what works for everyone. So that would obviously add to someone's calendar. I, I say someone because I think there's value in consistency and the same person being present. So you can, you know the prior conversation when you come in. You're not trying to figure out, you know, how did they get to here? So I'm going to stop talking and just get your thoughts on, on having someone serve in that capacity. And I will say one more thing. This isn't like a formal appointment because we may find that it's not necessary or it's too much. So it's really, I don't know if we want to call it a pilot program, but thoughts?
Can I just add a couple of things to that? I also, again, want to just reiterate, this person wouldn't be serving as a point of contact for either group to reach out to. They're simply informative to the rest of the board as, as we have during executive session during the process. And again, in not participating, that doesn't mean that they're caucusing with any, any group. They just wouldn't, wouldn't be a part of that, part of the process either. And then meetings are held here in this building, if that matters for volunteering. This would be the location.
Are, are both sides on board with this idea?
Yes. I, you can see them nodding. But I, I had a conversation with Angie Powers. We've talked about it. I talked with Clint and so everyone, yeah.
And I would say by law, the negotiations meetings are open meetings. So, you know, it's great if everybody says, yes, let's feel good about it, but it's not even necessary in a process like this.
Yeah, I, I would just, only reason I ask that is I don't want to become more adversary. I don't want to become adversarial if it wasn't. The, the weekly ones, are we talking a few hours each one? I'm trying to figure out time.
Feel free to.
Yeah, we schedule for two hours and we try and state it that.
Are we wanting to select someone tonight? Are we just talking about this? Okay. Yes, select someone.
I, you know, if there's someone who feels strongly tonight, you know, I want to be here, I want to be that person, great. If there's, if you, if people want to think about it, then totally, I mean, this is new conversation. As I said, the organizational meeting is in January.
You probably have, what, the next board meeting?
Ninth, January ninth.
You'll probably have your next board meeting before we would meet, if you wanted to think about it.
So there could be some time to, yeah.
I love the concept. I'm not certain about the time limit myself.
Sure. Do what Will said.
Sure.
Is there lunch involved?
Is there lunch?
Dinner.
Did you say lunch?
Dinner.
There are snacks, so are snacks.
Snacks are always good.
There are a few people that drag a table out and put some chips on a table or something like that, so nothing too glamorous.
Diet Dr. Pepper or just Dr. Pepper?
Just Dr. Pepper and Snickers.
You'd be in charge of bringing.
We could probably figure that out if that's the deal breaker there.
Is there any refereeing involved? No.
No, no. This is, and there is, again, there's, there's not some ulterior motive here to have a board member in the room or some need at all. It's truly an opportunity to have a, a better understanding, to, to observe, learn. And as, as Ms. Steele said, I mean, this person is sitting where Cassie is sitting and then when the meeting's over, they go home. And so there's not input, interaction. It's not a decision-making role in any capacity because we do that as a group.
I can, I can definitely see value in it. And I think last year, or when it feels like I've been here a while, but it's only been a year, right? But I feel like the last time we had these conversations after negotiations happened, I said, you do this every year? So I do, I do see great value in learning that process. I don't know that it would be something that would be repeated by the same person potentially year to year if you had that opportunity to serve in that capacity. Maybe it would be something that would be rotated, yeah, for learning. And I don't, I don't know if it's the continuous throughout the negotiations process or it would be, you know, as you see fit or if there's certain times that are really valuable versus other ones that are not. I don't know, you know, what the conversations tend to.
You know, if I, if I could say a couple of things, I, you know, I think Dr. Yurkovich or Mrs. Steele mentioned this, that, you know, professional counsel has been longstanding in our district for over 20 years, just the way that, that we negotiate. And, and obviously, you know, it probably, when we talk about money and things like that, it tends to look a little more traditional, but it's also a very proactive approach. And I would say that, you know, I think there's some benefit in having a board member that really gets a sense of what's that, what that is like for, for all the reasons that are mentioned. I also think the timing of having this conversation is really important. And the reason why I think that is, you know, we, we are going to be in some interesting places over the next couple of years, certainly as a school system, but also as members of the public education world. The school finance formula that we're currently funded on is, is up to be reset in 2027. That will impact our school district. That will impact what we do or don't have in terms of negotiations and, and taking care of, you know, our staff and therefore taking care of our kids. And, you know, I do think there's some opportunity as we look at ways to even, you know, move forward our interests as a school system, not just as a staff group or a board group, but as an entity that, that cares about all of our people and cares about the students we serve. I think the timing is, is pretty good to, to really go down this road, begin to look at what it looks like. I appreciate Mrs. Steele and Dr. Yurkovich and their thoughtful nature about what's the correct entry point for this. Because I think that's one of the things that over time may feel just great and perfect and, you know, the board and/or professional counsel may have a conversation and say, let's look at this a little differently and that kind of thing. So I just wanted to add those two things because we're, we're headed towards some interesting times. And I think the more people at this table, professional council table, and across our system that understand and have the ability to navigate those waters will be helpful overall for us as a system.
I wonder too, since the ninth meeting is before, if, I'm wondering if there's a way we could maybe continue this so we can put a little more thought, especially with the scheduling component being an issue. But speaking of timing, I think on the heels of the work we've done with the ODDs, the district dialogues, you know, we, we meant it when we said we are a team, we work together. I think about what Megan Bricks has said in her public comments, our Olathe Public Schools. And while we would not be a participatory agent in these meetings, you, there's nothing, you can't recap a meeting in the same way if you are doing it from someone else. Like, you know, we hear about it from Mr. Albers or we hear about it from a member of ONEA or whatnot. And so I think if we're going to put our money where our mouth is and we say we're, we're committed to doing something, being fully aware as a board, I think that's powerful. And, I mean, to be honest, I would love to do it. I just need to look at my calendar. But if someone else wants to, go for it. Snickers.
Snacks and Robbie's in. Pardon me?
Snacks and Robbie's in.
I think we could all contribute to the snacks.
Yeah.
I, I then, from what I'm hearing, some thought and totally understand that, I'll put it on the agenda in January and we'll finalize a decision at that time. And if there is an individual who feels like that is a calling and can commit to that time before then, if you would reach out and either Ms. Steele or myself or Dr. Yeager, and then we'll move, move forward in one direction or another in January.
And I would say too, if anybody wants to have a Dr. Pepper or a cup of coffee to talk more about it, just to get a fuller, fuller breadth of what it's like, I know Mr. Albers would be happy to sit down with anybody as well and just talk through it a little bit more if there's other information that's needed in terms of that decision-making.
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Albers, I'm assuming you'll be okay with that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, board. Dr. Yeager.
Well, so many of the things I was going to mention tonight have, have already been mentioned and I, I so appreciate that. You know, when we all kind of come up with the same things, it's really an indication of a system that's pointed together on the same things as well. So I just wanted to thank you all for your participation in the district dialogue. Our Board of Education group was the smallest kind of represented group in all of those and certainly have a heavy load for you all as volunteers. So again, I wouldn't, won't reiterate everything that's said, but I also want to thank you all for your participation in that. I want to thank our principals tonight that came forward to talk about the cell phone policy. They did such a nice job, I think, of summarizing by level where things are and what have you. So thank you to them for doing that and thank you for you all for asking for an update in December as well. I think that was great. Mrs. Steele mentioned chronic absenteeism and boy, have our, have our community members, our parents, our guardians, our staff, they've done an amazing job with that. I just checked the data last night because I was just curious how we're trending right now. You may remember our chronic absenteeism number as a school system was 23% last year. As of yesterday, we're at 12%, which is a pretty high bar. And if, if we're able to hang on like that, we'll probably have. And if, if we're able to hang on like that, we'll probably have the lowest rate in the state. So, you know, I think it just says a lot about the work that our staff specifically is doing in terms of reaching out to families and talking with kids about the importance of being in schools. So I just so appreciate all the work and effort that's gone into that across our entire system. We'll talk obviously more about that as, as well as we come forward. You know, and the last thing I would say, and you know, this is obviously the time of the year where we give thanks and appreciation for a lot of things. And, you know, attending the district dialogues, I've learned a lot. But, you know, I've been in this system for almost 20 years. I love this school system. You know, I'm lucky to be married to somebody that loves this school system, but surrounded by people all day who love this school system. Get an occasional call from somebody that may not. But the, the, the reality is though, that we do have something special in Olatha. And, you know, just this week, I was reminded as I was visiting to a, a school and walking through some classrooms and had the opportunity to talk to an experienced educator. They came to us from another school district that shall remain nameless. But I said, how are you doing? How do you like it here? And her words were something along the lines of, I've died and gone to heaven. And I think sometimes, you know, one of the things that we don't often do in life, in all aspects of life, is really slow down to smell the roses and look at the grass that's around us. And, you know, certainly like all school districts, like all organizations, like all big businesses, there are things that we can do better. There are things we can improve with. That's part of our job and that's been articulated tonight. But I also think it's important for us to remember and to slow down and say, gosh, there's some things we do really well here and that our community and our staff recognize. And most importantly, our kids benefit from that each and every day. But I just appreciated that. The staff members, that's just like, I've died and gone to heaven. It's so good here. And she didn't say it was perfect, so, but, but, you know, it's just, it was a good reminder to me that there are a lot of things that are right, a lot of things that are working well. And a lot of that's just the, the work and dedication of everyone across our system, including this Board of Education. So thank you all for that. This is our last board meeting of 2024, which is hard to believe, but we will quickly be on winter break, as, as you all know. You know, my ask to our community at large over winter break is let our staff have a winter break this year. So, you know, if we could take a couple of weeks and not send emails and phone calls and things like that, our people would really appreciate it and they'll come back refreshed and renewed and, and ready for 2025 and everything that second semester holds moving forward. The other thing I would say is if you run into teachers or staff members at a local restaurant over the break, buy them lunch or dinner and tell them thanks. And we have some really, really good people in Olatha that those messages mean the world. And it doesn't have to be lunch or dinner. It can be a thank you as well. Those things just are so appreciated by everyone that works in our system. So those are my comments tonight.
Thank you. Board, we have two executive sessions. And so this first one, we will be in 10 minutes. That's our goal. And I would welcome a motion.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student under coma and that the board return to the regular meeting at eight, at 7:57 PM in this room.
How about we make it eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
And then people can take a comfort break before.
PM in this room.
Second.
Who is the second? I'm sorry.
Brad.
Brad, thank you. Motion by Claire Reagan, second by Brad Boyd.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Johansson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. We will return at eight o'clock.